Are you thinking? Oh, my, so worried.
What's that? No, he's in Houston.
He may call.
He did text us, say good luck.
Okay, let's get to the floor. Okay, it's Monday, July 26, 2021, 9:00 a.m. Wilson County Commissioners' Court is now in session. We'll have the opening prayer by Joel Sosa, the youth pastor at Life Church, and also our ex-lemnager.
Lord, thank you so much, God, for all these people who are just willing to serve. And, uh, Lord, I just pray for wisdom today. You said that if we need wisdom to ask, and we will receive it. And so, Lord, we trust in that today, that you will just guide us. And bless these people, Lord, as they hash out these plans. God, give us grace, Lord, most of all. We need your empowering grace. Lead us, guide us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas pride, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Joel. Okay. Move into Agenda Item Number Three, public comment. Okay, Agenda Item Number Four, certificates of completion and award. Criminal Justice Information Services Security Awareness Training. This is to certify that Julie Fleming has successfully completed the Level Three Security Awareness Certification, July 13th, 2021. And that's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Moving to Agenda Item Number Five, Paul Faw, Commissioner Precinct Two, discuss and take action on not accepting any new county roads.
Judge, this is something we've been discussing for a while, and, and I'd like to see us move forward in trying to, to, to not accept any more roads in the county that developers and, and put it off on the HOA for the developers to maintain these roads. Right now, we, we got more roads than we can handle. I know other counties that have done this, gone this way. I'm not saying it's make it effective today, but we need to look into this and go forward and try not to accept any more roads in the county. I know you were looking at trying to do something.
Yes, I, I have looked into lots of different things, and one of them, what brought to my attention was the Pid. Okay, Pid is, a Pid is working good in Medina County. I've also got information that the Pid is not working well in Vernon County. So, is it, it's two different deals, because I think Vernon County is, is, their developments are like ours, acreage.
Acre.
Okay, what's in Medina County is smaller, lots more compact when you've got a same-size subdivision. We have 100 homes in, they'll have 500 homes in. Or we'd have 200 homes in, they have 800 to 1,000 homes. And, but it's something, and I, what I have, I have contacted Medina County, and, and I've contacted an attorney that specializes in Pids, and he will meet with us. What we'll have to do is I would like to designate a day, and, because I'd like all commissioners to be there. But I'd like all commissioners to be there. Uh, so, I've got a group, a list of days that I can be available in the afternoon after 3:00 o'clock, uh, and I'm going to pass it out to y'all. And if y'all see which days it work, I would like to get three days that, uh, we can, three days that we can send to them, where they can, uh, pick out one of those days and send it back to us. So, uh, I, I'm like you, I'm going to stop the bleeding. We're, we're way behind on how we can keep up with our roads, but I don't think we need to rush into it without figuring out what we're going to do.
Judge, what's a Pid?
A Pid?
You said a Pid, yeah.
Public?
I think it's Property Improvement District.
What is it?
Property.
Improvement District.
Improvement.
Public Improvement District. And it's organized similar to, I don't know what you could call it, because it, it's similar to a homeowners association, but similar to, uh, a road, a, a road district, but they don't charge the taxes in assessment. And I'm, that's a lot of reason I'd like to meet with some of these, this commissioner from Medina County and his attorney, where they can explain everything to us. So, and another deal is if we do decide to go with this, let's set a date somewhere, okay, once we get decide what we're going to do, let's set a date, this is a date that, because here's the thing, if we stopped accepting county roads and we don't have some kind of a good plan, that, there goes development in Wilson County. So, we've got to have everything, and we don't want to stop that, but we've got to have everything in a row where we can go forward with that and still have development in Wilson County.
I think our development will still be there, Judge, regardless of anything, and the growth is still coming. I don't see it stopping.
If, if it's not done right, even if the development is here, there's going to be, there're going to be problems later on. And that, I don't want to throw this on the Commissioners' Court in the future.
I just know that probably 50% of the counties in the state of Texas have gone this way.
How many, 50%?
A lot of the counties, the rural counties, basically, have gone this way. And, and I know more and more are looking into it.
Well, we're looking into it, but like I said, I don't want to, I don't want to go into it, because I, if, if we've got something good and solid, have a Pid's going to be the thing, the direction that we need to go, then, then that's the thing. A homeowners association, we've got probably 200 subdivisions in Wilson County, and I don't know how many active sub, active homeowners associations we have.
Probably about half. The newer ones.
I'm going to say about two or three.
That are really active.
That are really active, and if, and they're not very active.
The one that the last five to 10 years have been growing. The old ones don't, but all the new ones are.
Not my, not my precinct.
I, I, I've seen very little.
The developers usually.
I mean, every now and then they'll have a meeting if they have something that they want to discuss, and I don't know how active they are at collecting their homeowner's fees and dues.
That's up to them, I mean.
Yeah, that's up to them, but then again, if you put the responsibility of them to collect their homeowner's dues and fees, and then, okay, you're going to use that to pay roads, that's going to be a whole different situation. So, this is something, yes, I'm far, moving forward with it, but I want to be sure we do it right when we do it.
What about the third and the fourth?
If y'all, like I said, y'all, mark, mark three days that y'all can, out of those, if y'all can, that y'all can all get together with and, and have a meeting, and we're going to have to post that day also, because we're all going to be here. And it's going to be in the afternoon after 3:00 o'clock. If y'all would, mark those. Did y'all want to take any action this morning, or just let's, let's meet and then see what we're going to do?
I could do either second, third, or fourth. Be Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, I think, I think I can too, I need to double check, but.
Okay, well, get them to me after lunch or something, and I can get back with them this afternoon.
Okay.
Okay.
So, do we need a motion to table this for the moment, or?
I guess we're.
Motion to move forward with investigation, with the possibility of doing it?
We can do that, take a motion on pursuing. An avenue to not to accept county roads. But, uh, if we just don't take action, we can put it back on the agenda later on.
I'll make a motion to just table this till we, we look into meeting with the.
Motion by Commissioner Faw.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perdola, that we table this until we get more information. Is there any more discussion?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, so it's tabled. Okay, Agenda Item Number Six, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, discuss and take action on Wilson County American Rescue Plan Committee Recommendation. And you get the, the form, Michelle. Or does Carmen, did you have, because you're the one that wrote the recommendation.
So, three, three of the, three of the committee members are here this morning?
Yes.
Carmen and David Cross, who's in the back.
And Kevin Stenish.
I didn't see David slip in.
Good morning. So, we've had, um, three committee, uh, meetings with the American Rescue Plan Committee for Wilson County. Uh, we finally made some headway, um, this last committee meeting, and, um, the committee would like to recommend to the court, um, to move forward with investigating and costing and spacing out layouts for emergency management priorities, which would include a new building, perhaps, um, uh, the jail renovations, uh, some communications, um, phases, and then as well as renovations for the show barn to kind of be repurposed, or not repurposed, but kind of act as a staging and mobility, uh, center for emergencies. So, that, that's why, that's why we're here today, is to ask your permission to move forward with costing those phases out, it would be in phases, um, and, um, spacing layouts as well, um, so that the cost and, and spacing can be taken back to the committee and determined whether or not it's even feasible with the amount of money it's going to cost, or what, whatnot, to move forward, um, and then, of course, bring that back to you all to, to take final action on it.
So.
And if there's any committee members that want to say anything?
So, this will, this will get us started.
Yeah, so basically, we're asking you to, to take action on, on moving forward with getting quotes and, and, um, getting someone down here to, um, talk with the necessary people to get all the necessary equipment to renovations for the jail, the emergency management building, and possibly the show barn.
Now, weren't we just in the committee, didn't we just vote, move forward with Item One, which was, uh, emergency management?
Yeah, we were kind of, we were, we had consolidated it all into one, so that we could phase it out, and we could determine, because all of it was determined to be, um, part of in that emergency management realm.
Yeah, so let me, let me expand on what Michelle said. So, basically, we, we assessed the needs, the committee has assessed the needs in the county, and, uh, one of the big input items that, that they actually brought to the table, the committee members, was, was in their conversations with the public, that they would like to see us do things that we would regularly have to pay for with tax money, um, and, and this would help them by not, us not having to use tax money to pay for these things. So, as we prioritize the, the items that were on the list, um, emergency management was one of those key items, uh, where we found that we're lacking facilities, uh, our communications network is, is failing, and, uh, we needed improvements, particularly in those tiers. And then also, uh, there are several items in the jail, uh, where they had issues of quarantining inmates and, uh, being able to isolate those folks that they needed to isolate. And so, the, the, behind the recommendation is, uh, to get an architect to help us with space planning and determine the size of that building, and come up with a preliminary cost estimate. Um, the sheriff is going to work with the, uh, the former, who was the actual contractor, right Sheriff?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that built the jail, that's familiar with all the construction, and get a recommendation to him, uh, on how things, uh, or what, what improvements and changes need to be made to make the jail more effective, um, in a quarantine type environment.
Okay. Can you put that in form of a motion?
Yes, I will. Uh, I'll make a motion to, uh, authorize hiring an architect to assist us with space planning and preliminary cost estimate for the, uh, Emergency Operations Center. And I mean, we'll probably need to make two or three. We'll do more in time.
Can we lump all into one, Eva, or do we need to separate them all out?
So, it's up to you.
We'll want to meet for the jail, and then we'll meet for the communication system.
I think the, I think the recommendation is that you're asked to report to allow us to give us the approval, to move forward with the research on the costs for emergency operations, emergency operations.
Then I make a motion for the court to authorize the committee to proceed forward with obtaining cost estimates, uh, for the Emergency Operations Center Communications and Jail.
And, uh, okay, the repairs, improvements to the jail that are needed, that are mandated by?
The jail standards.
Okay.
On second, on second motion.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, and we'll probably have to get together and let that Eva.
Yes.
And second by Commissioner Perdola, that we move forward with, uh, giving cost estimates and that for the emergency management building and.
Jail.
Emergency shop and jail.
In the radio system.
And what?
In the radio system.
And the radio system, okay. Is there any more discussion?
Do you want to look at, maybe look at your?
The cross?
Well, I think Michelle's got something where we can maybe get some money on the bridges, or is that in this same?
It's not in this motion.
It's, it's, yeah, it, it's not in the motion, but it was brought up to the committee, um, and the, the idea was to, I'm sorry, the idea was to, um, look at how much the emergency management, um, endeavor was going to cost, bring it back to you all to, and to decide on that, and then, with whatever was left over, then we would prioritize out the roadways and whatnot.
Yeah, uh, Commissioner Perdola, there's, one call, they seem like restrictions, there's some limited uses, it appears, and, uh, I know, we, we had a couple of questions, and Michelle's got to go and get answered, because it, the wording was, uh, you can make road repairs for storm and sewer.
Storm water management and sewer management. Any road repairs associated with, with doing improvements on roadways for storm water management and sewer would, uh, in fact, be eligible under the American Rescue Plan. But that has to align with the Clean Water Act, the rules of the Clean Water Act.
So, it, it might be, you know, the example I used is it might cost you $10,000 to put in a cover, but then you got to spend $10,000 on water quality improvement, and maybe that's not what we have to, what we'd be willing to do. So, we've got a little bit more research to do.
There's a little bit more research.
And, and finding out, the final rule, I guess, actually.
Yeah, I, I've been checking, I've been checking daily, so the final rule was supposed to be, um, our comments were supposed to seize on the 16th of July, so hopefully in the next week or so, um, we'll have an actual final rule that we can use to, to decipher all the unknowns.
And probably, hopefully, in appropriate guidance documents.
Okay. Got a motion in a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, what I did do, put it on the record this fall ago, was Commissioner Precinct Four, Larry Wiley, is absent. Now it's on the record. Okay, Agenda Item Number Seven, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Michelle Mordo, Bronx Manager, discuss and authorize the county auditor to issue the purchase order for the third Precinct Two truck purchased from the Tex VMP, V E M P grant.
So, this is just, um, this is the other truck that did not make it in with the other trucks for all of you commissioners. Um, they, they finally gave us, uh, Tex TCQ finally gave us a executed contract last Tuesday, and we're just needing, um, the county auditor to issue the purchase order in order to get that order moving forward, so.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Faw, second by Commissioner Martin, that we move forward with the purchase order. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so, there's truck number three. Okay, Agenda Item Number Eight, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Brenda L. Trevino, County Auditor, Christina Luce, interim county treasurer, discuss and take action on Wilson County's 2021 investment policy as presented by the county auditor and the county treasurer. Okay, which one, y'all get the floor?
I'll give it to Christina, I just want, she's going to pass it out to you guys, um, and we have, I have synthesized and had it reviewed by our external auditor, and it has been properly reviewed and okayed to present to court. Um, this is one of the things that will clear up one of our deficiencies on our external audit, because we didn't have one in 2020, so this is going to be 2021, and we will present a new one in 2022, at the same time next year.
Yes, and I do have it, I know everybody got the email, so you do have that, I don't know if this is Eva's. I will have the attachment, I apologize, it's, um, I just noticed, for everybody to sign before the end of the court, for everybody to approve it, if it's approved, but here's the copy I need to give to Eva. Don't have any questions.
Listen for all of us this year.
And, no, I apologize, I could have put in the copy for everybody, and I just thought I emailed it, that's my fault. Yeah.
We got more copies, so.
I did, I did, yes, I do apologize.
She didn't, she didn't print any more.
I didn't print, I, since I emailed them, I was in thinking, so that's mine.
You said, Brian, you read, I'm not through it.
I mean, I looked at it already, so. Don't we look at it?
I just didn't want y'all looking over my shoulder trying to read the same type of words. If we have questions in a second. Did y'all hold aside on the second, third, and fourth?
For me?
I think so. I need to, I need to look the mic down.
Okay.
Just to make sure. That's, that's next Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, I don't, I don't think I have anything, but I need to double check. I'll let you, I'll go with Brian.
Okay. It'll work for me, that's the reason, I, I've looked on my calendar, anything after 3:00 o'clock on any of those days.
Now, that's meeting with Medina County?
Yes. With, uh, well, well, one commissioner and then.
Your attorney.
An attorney that's, uh, very versed in the TID. The one, he's the one that they use.
What's that? Here. What's that? Clay Benford?
For anybody that had any questions, I know you've reviewed it, I haven't looked at it, but, uh, I didn't, almost, wait for it, maybe you got the, or the.
Outside all of them have turned it, but if you didn't set it, looks good, then that's who we're going to need to make sure is happy.
Exactly why I sent it to her.
Anybody have any questions to the treasurer or the auditor?
I'll make a motion to defend Wilson County's 2021 investment policy as presented by the county auditor and county treasurer.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Faw, that we accept the investment policy for the.
And the page is coming on its way right now when you speak, so.
What's that?
The page signed, everything, it's coming, it's coming.
Anybody else think, anybody have any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so, we have a really agreed upon investment policy. Okay, Agenda Item Number Nine, Richard L. Jackson County Judge, Tom Ebron, Ed County Assistant Collector, discuss and take action on updating the Tex DMV, the annual county fees. Are we able to get them? Okay, I got the document, I don't even have a place to sign what it brought to me, so.
I have not spoken to.
I have got. No information from. Give her a call and see if she knows what the fees are, she didn't, but then, I said it's not even signature, so, so. Something that I asked to get it, you know, didn't, nobody got it.
Well, it said it's due by, um, September 1st, so it must have moved it on the next.
Well, I mean, it's got, may not exceed, and I don't know what I was wondering, are we okay what we've gotten out, but $10, what does she want to put in there? And this one may not exceed $1.50, and then this one may not exceed, uh, $10, but, uh.
I sent her a message, she didn't answer.
What's that?
I sent her a message, she, she didn't answer. I don't know, you want to, want to skip it and see if she called back?
I don't know, you wanna skip it and see if she called back?
Okay. Motion to take this.
You could just go on to the next one and then table it at the end, Judge.
Okay, let's just, we'll come back to this later, we can. Move along to Agenda Item Ten, Gary Martin, Commissioner Precinct One, discuss and take action on the steps to place no-through truck traffic signs on county roads 103, 107, 108, and 112. The steps include posting a notice of a public hearing in the paper, conducting a public hearing, and taking a final vote.
Yeah, I was contacted by several of the constituents that are out in that area. We all know we have a challenge with the sand plant that is out there, and instead of sticking to the primary roads, they're cutting through on the county roads, speeding and other things. But at any rate, they requested that we make both roads no-through trucks. And so, in my memo to the court, I recommend that the following roads be designated for no-through trucks. County Road 103 from a point approximately 2,400 feet north of State Highway 97, west FM 2505. County Road 107 from FM 536 to FM 52579. County Road 112 from its intersection with County Road 107 to County Road 108, and from County Road 108 from its intersection with County Road 112 to FM 2579. So I'll make a motion to take the steps necessary to place no-through truck traffic signs on county roads 103, 107, 108, and 112.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola, I have a question on these. Okay, these are the roads that would be going to the sand plant?
Well, they're the roads that are around it, that they're cutting through to get to 536, 2579, or whatever direction they're going. Some of them come out and go down 97, but a lot of them, for whatever, for some reason, seem to be going north. And so, they're, they're cutting through the county roads instead of taking 2505 and 536 to 2579. It is a little bit shorter. But they're.
Okay, I was just, just curious, they were coming off of 536, coming in the back way?
Sometimes, yeah.
But I know the road, I don't think it was ever designated anything, but coming off of 97 West, right there at 103, from there to the property line, what we, I was under the understanding they were gonna use for their entrance.
Yes, and that's why, that's, it says, it's from that point where 103 turns and goes towards 2505, that's where it'll start. From 103 to the entrance of the plant that has.
Do they ever drive that road? I don't know, like, a million people would drive.
No, but I'm fixing to put a base on it, so.
Oh, okay, y'all gonna get it fixed up, because at one time it was little trails.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we got a motion by Commissioner Ryan in a second? Okay.
Yes.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I guess you can have your, get your public hearing going.
Right.
Get it posted. Okay, Agenda Item Number Eleven, Leanne Hoshack, EMC, 11A, naming a private lane in Precinct One, Seal Lane, review and approve.
There's a couple more that you did.
I guess we can do them all at once, but we can do, and then also in Precinct One, Antonio Lane. If it's in a different precinct, we need to wait and have another.
I would separate out.
And that last one is actually Precinct Two, not Precinct.
Oh, Precinct Two, okay.
We'll make that correction.
Okay.
These are all old easements and families splitting up property off these old easements and.
So we're gonna have people moving in, back in here with theirs?
Yes, and it's either a situation where it's pretty far off a public road, and by doing the road naming of that easement, it'll help with the emergency response.
And the 911 address.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Seal Lane and Antonio Lane, Precinct One, for our road names.
Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we named these two lanes that were designated Seal Lane and Antonio Lane. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes. Now we're going to 11A with Precinct Two, Sakula Lane, this off of County Road 228. Is there already people that have residence off of these, some of these lots you see back there? Make a motion, Paul?
I'll make a motion, David.
Motion by Commissioner Faal, second by Commissioner Perdola, that we named the lane off of County Road 228, Sakula Lane. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we have a new Sakula Lane. Okay, I've gone to 11B, discuss and take action on updates to Wilson County subdivision and development rules and regulations.
And that was put on the agenda and was dependent on what y'all decided on the earlier item about whether or not to accept roads. So that way, if I needed to do updates to the subdivision regulations because of that, I would have permission to get started on marking on that. So it's up to y'all, if you wanna.
I guess we can table it.
Table it now, or?
I'll make a motion, we table that.
Motion by Commissioner Faal.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Martin, we table the possible updates of subdivision development rules and regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we've done that. Okay. Moving right along, we haven't got any.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes, sir, she said the two presented as is, and there is a paper to present an as is.
As is, there's no.
And no signature.
All you have to do is accept it, and that's all she has to let them know, is that the committee accepted.
Okay.
Division's court.
But it's blank, it doesn't have any fees on it.
Oh, I follow the state fees as the previous years, that's what she said, that they do this every year. If there are no changes to the fees, she doesn't go into the law.
Okay. It's still, it doesn't show that we're not above, and I'm sure we're not, what the maximum is. I don't like the idea of not having a number on here. Can you ask her to send us the numbers?
I have not seen that, so I don't know if the numbers, if we need to increase or decrease that, I don't know.
Now, just get, and get the numbers that are, that are actually what we're charging now. Okay.
So she says none of these are collected, you have the child safety fees, and then the transportation are not collected. It's only a $10 waiver, which means it's the same one.
That's the only fee that we charge?
Yes, she says the same one every single year, all they do is accept it as a formality on Commissioner's court. If there are no changes to the, to the.
I understand that, but I just wanted to be sure, I wanted to see the numbers on the line.
Yeah, she says.
So we collect one of those?
Judge, can we, since this is not due till September 1st, can we put this on the next court agenda so I have time to review it?
Sounds good to me. I'd like to see the numbers, because I know we charge all those on the institution.
And then you just have to, y'all are doing table.
Yeah, yeah, because it's not due till the 1st, so we can put it on the August 9th agenda.
I'll make a motion, Judge, we table. Item number nine.
Second. We got the second. Okay, motion by Commissioner Faal, second by Commissioner Martin, we table item number nine until we get the actual numbers on it. Is there any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, here we go again, Agenda Item Number Twelve, Christina Moose, San John County Treasurer, financial report.
All right, today I review copies of San John County's financial reports. You'll see, of course, the first page was everything, the second page will go into our accounts that we have. Obviously, what's beginning with all their credits and debits, and what's ending at the end of the month.
What's the date, is this 2000?
December of 2020, December 31st, 2020, as well as January 31st, 2021, is what's being handed out and reported today. Moving on then to the second, or, excuse me, third page, December, you'll see what we have as far as owed for our construction, then our lease purchases, as far as the equipment. Our outstanding debt is all listed on that page. Then, the third one is our quarterly financial investment report that we receive quarterly, where we have invested money previous, I believe, a few years back, I apologize, I don't have the date, I don't have it. But that's listing what we have with them invested. And then following with that last page is with our new software FI, it will show you within the funds of the debits and the credits. And so, what your earning balance is of the month. I will keep in mind with the conversion, some of those numbers might change just due to receding in different areas and having to change that. But those are the same pages that are attached in January as well.
Just to note, on page three, the first sentence, that should not be $8,500, there's a six zeros missing.
Oh, I do apologize about that, I was supposed to call you there.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's 8.5.
Yes. When I do, oh, period, hello.
Bet the numbers are correct.
Okay, this taxable income, it's like from the flex facility?
Yes.
Okay.
So we file the, yes, on the 20th of every month, we file with the state comptroller to pay the sales tax on that. As well as the phone cards that are purchased at the commissary for the jail.
Okay. We have to pay tax on those too?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. I do, yes, if you'd like, no, go ahead and take that and sign that, and I can give you yours if you wanna pass those on to Eva once they're approved.
Pass the whole thing or just a cushion?
The whole thing, because then they have to be uplifted, or loaded on the way side.
Okay.
And you have, I have your front here, I'll trade to you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's reports for the month ending December 31st, 2020, and January 31st, 2021.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola, we accept the financial reports for December and January. Is there any more questions or additions or anything? Is all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have, given post.
So please keep in mind those numbers are from six months ago, so they have all significantly changed since then, so.
Okay, moving along to Agenda Item Number. Agenda Item 13, Jalen T. Butler, Human Resource General Specialist, payroll personnel changes.
Good morning. So Ralph Lerma was hired as a road hand for Precinct Four, making $1,650 per hour, $34,320 annually, effective August 9th. Josh Langoria resigned from his position as a part-time library clerk, effective July 9th. Riley Mcgamber resigned from his position as a corrections officer for the Sheriff's Department, effective July 14th. Frank Highsaw resigned from his position as a maintenance supervisor, effective July 14th. Garrett Hardwick was terminated from his position as a corrections officer with the Sheriff's Department, effective July 15th. Ashley Daywood resigned from her position as a corrections officer with the Sheriff's Department, effective July 15th. Kelly Trevino was terminated from his position as a corrections officer with the Sheriff's Department, effective July 16th. Annabella Cantu will be resigning from her position as a part-time extension clerk with the extension office, effective July 26th. And Valerie Nash will be resigning from her position as a part-time veteran service officer, effective July 29th.
Okay. No changes, no line item changes? Thank you. Okay, moving right along to agenda item number 14, Reda El Trevino, county auditor, sale.
Yes.
Name of the report?
No. Bills total $152,331.21. Like, like pocketbook today, so...
Better than usual.
Yeah, exactly.
Hey, Sharon, you were asking about your legal, about the pay, or the pay mom, so I reached out and made it for our outside auditor to call me back, because I think, I don't think that you have to do a budget amendment, I think I can just code the invoice to your front balance, but I want to verify that that's the proper way, so that's how we get to the compensation. As soon as she gets back with me.
I assume they're here, so you've got bills on cover, one of them anyway.
Yeah, we sent them, we sent them to the adjusters, so we'll just see.
Question on, okay, when Tech dot gives us the material?
Tech dot gives us the material?
Yeah, they do it periodically. Do we use as an expense?
No.
They go pick it up? We don't?
I never, we never know when it gets picked up or...
And we just go, take our drugs, we go get it.
Why the big expense to fuel labor?
I think that's why the auditor wanted us to kind of inventory those lot policies.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola, we approve the bills. Is there any more questions, additions, additions, anything like that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we have paid the bills.
So they want to inventory those policies from Tech dot or not?
They recommended, well, they, the outside auditors recommended that every precinct has an accurate inventory of all of your materials, whatever that looks like. So you probably need to come up with a, a plan. Put up, you all have to be on the same page, is how that's going to look in terms of keeping track of material purchased, received, donated, how much is used, because we don't track that in the auditor's office, so that would have to be something that each one of you, you know, hire somebody or do it yourself or...
Well, I think what she said was, if we got it like every October morning or sometime, and can't just do it once a year, I think that's all she was looking for.
We can go back and read it, but it's got to be some kind of value placed on that inventory.
I thought they said on the Tech dot material that we weren't paying for, we didn't have to keep inventory on that, just on material purchase from wrong tax or something?
I'm not, right, I'm not speaking solely on Tech dot, I'm talking about your inventory as a whole, your, your material, your yard, correct.
Okay, okay.
Would you clarify that, what we need to do?
We're waiting on, agenda item 15, a journal is 9:53.